Okay. Motion to open meeting.
Motion for meeting. So motion.
All right, do I have a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Him.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Planning Board Meeting, Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, at 7:05 PM. Um. Approval of the September 2021 meeting minutes.
So motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Bond reduction on Billis Way, Al Couillard.
Mr. Chair, just to give you some background, um, the developer has submitted to the SWIP report, has paid the inclusionary fee, and has also addressed some, a small erosion issue along the cul-de-sac on the cemetery side where we had made that modification from the, the retaining wall to the fence, so he did put up, um, some stone to make sure that the site has been stabilized. Uh, TEC went out to the site and have, um, confirmed the reduction from 235,965 to 73,125. And Mr. Couillard is here tonight if you have any specific questions, but we would recommend that you reduce the bond to 73,125.
Do we, um, do we have the total SWIP report?
We have all of the SWIP reports. There was a, a lapse in, in, um, Moore and Cameron, they were, uh, one of their engineers had left, but, um, Moore and Cameron, uh, Scott Cameron specifically had reached out to me and provided all of those additional reports.
And how far along, what do we got left besides erosion control, loom, seed, trees, as-built? Has the-
Curb and all in?
Curb and all in?
Oh, yeah.
Do you want to just get in front of the mic?
Yeah, why don't, yeah, why don't you come up? Wally, the rest of the board?
Driveways, and I don't see the engineer review fee for the as-built, is that, do we have enough in the account to review the as-built when it comes in? We typically hold 10 for that.
I'll verify while you continue to address.
The driveways, are they all paved, bound or paved?
They're binded.
Are they gonna get paved?
Of course. That's outside the right of way, though. I don't know. It's not on that sheet in front of you, it's not on the-
That's part of the plan?
The charity bond. Yeah, it's just part of the subdivision plan. Doesn't really say, but yes, they're gonna be paid.
I think we, the 73,125, Wally, what are you? I say we hold it for 100.
Yeah, I think that's a, that'll include anything, anything else, it'll certainly include what I was thinking. Um, I, I think that's a-
Anything that we missed?
So I-
Plus, we always go 20, you know, 25% over anyway.
And so, just so you know, the, um, the charity wouldn't be used for the as-built review, um, but we do have, um, $585 remaining in the ESCO account that could be used for the review of the as-built plan.
Okay. Is this a, um, tripart or cash bond?
Is that a-
Tripar, tripart or cash bond?
An insurance bond or is it cash?
It's a sure, it's a letter of credit.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, so yeah, then definitely a-
I bump it up to 100.
Yeah. I'll fly a motion for that if you want.
Sure.
Because I think that'll include all the others that are there. The fence is up, right? That whole thing with the cemetery, that's all done?
I think the cemetery is gonna put their own-
They were gonna do their own fence?
At the end of the day.
There's a fence in the plan that I was obligated to put up, it's, it's up.
So there's a portion of the plan that has a fence from where there's an access gate with the agreement for the Cemetery Commission to come in, and then it extends down to the property at the very back, but the Cemetery Commission has applied for a community preservation grant to finish the remaining part of the fence where they would like additional screening.
Okay, so your section of the fence is up? How many feet was that roughly?
300.
Is that a vinyl fence?
Yes.
Yeah, it's white vinyl.
Okay. All right, so that completes that out there.
Is that the conservatory, uh, keep up with the facade of the graveyard that they wanted a different style fence?
They're gonna take it from the 300 to the left, and they're gonna do the entrance gate in for the access.
That's actually a good, you know, kudos to the Cemetery Commission for community preservation, uh, but I think that was a good idea, so hats off to you for thinking about that. Um, on that. So, uh, I have nothing further that'll-
Fly the motion?
Yeah, I will. Fly the motion to, for the charity to be 100, reduced down to 100.
Anybody else from the board? Any objections, uh? All in, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion flies.
I've got the paperwork for you and scan it over to you. Thank you.
Okay.
Al, before you leave, I just do have a question on Atwood, can we ask? On Atwood.
Are you putting in the curbing?
No.
Any reason why not?
A whole bunch.
Huh?
A whole bunch of reasons.
Well, here, I'm gonna, I wanna show the board, this is what I saw in July, and I still don't think the grass is gonna do it justice. Pass that down to Wally. That wasn't even a 100-year storm.
Have you seen this picture?
We're gonna pass-
Seen the project every time it rains, the project is functioning the way it was designed, it was built the way it was designed, it's working, there's nothing wrong with it, it's 100%. Go there every time it rains.
So I was-
What you have or when you took it, but-
I will say that-
I seen it in the report today.
I will say that we, we have been continuing to monitor the site, there has been, the, the stabilization has been slow, but it has been progressing, so there has been, every single time you go to the site, there is a little bit more, and a little bit more, and a little bit more, but in the beginning, it was a, a little bit of a challenge because the hydroseed wouldn't take, and then we had to continue to try and hydroseed and continue to try and stabilize the state, but it, it, it has been getting better every time.
So, the, um-
The question-
In a while, so I look at a plan, what, what was actually on there, is that on the flat? So it's curbing, so when's the curb going in?
The curb is there.
Not on that section.
Not on that section, but the question would be, when the sun hits this back in July and August again next year, and it kills the grass because that's what happens from the pavement out, so what happens, what happens to that functioning drain? It won't, it'll be less functional, just like it is in this picture in July?
I disagree. It's like every other subdivision in town, Brad, that has-
Most every other subdivision has curbing.
No, no, they don't.
They have Cape, they have Cape Cod curbing?
Cape Cod, yeah.
Cape Cod, Burm, CCB?
Vertical granite, but-
Most of them, a large majority of them don't. I built the project the way it was designed. It's functioning the way it's designed. Christensen says it, I say it, Rebecca just said it, it's just the way it's designed. It's, it's, it's a swale instead of curbing all the way down to a catch basin. I don't know, I think Walt was probably the only one that was on this board when that plan got approved, but that-
I was here.
Oh, yeah, you, you might have been there.
It was a point, it was a point for curbing?
That's the way that-
It was planned for curbing for us, so-
I have to look, you look.
There cut, there was some curbing on the plan, on the radiuses, on the, to the left or the right, of the, the T in the road on Atwood Lane, and some around the cul-de-sac. They're actually on the wrong side of the cul-de-sac. The, I, we moved the curbing, I asked to move the curbing because the water is flowing towards Center Street. If we didn't move the curbing, all of the cul-de-sac on Atwood Lane would be flowing across Lot 1 and Lot 8, which are both have a very steep hill down to Center Street.
This is a-
Everybody, everybody, me, Phil Christensen, TEC, and Rennie, all went to the project before I put the curbs in, and we had a long conversation about what would work best, and we rearranged the curbs, we got permission, we got a minor modification, we rearranged the curbs, and they worked better, they worked the way they're supposed to work. Putting the curbs where they were would have no impact on what you're talking about in that picture.
But have you seen, come here and see this picture.
I've seen a bunch of pictures, they don't matter, Brad. Today-
Matters, uh, matters to me when I go down there and take a look at it, and this, this is spilling on, you know, residential property.
Yeah, I don't-
If you had a curb in front of that catch basin, it would work. I took it.
I have the same thing on my phone if you'll look at it, and I have a, a couple four-minute videos where I go out every time we get more than an inch of rain, and I video up and down the street, and I have them here to show all the water going exactly where it's supposed to go.
So what you're saying to us, that pitch is acceptable?
I'm saying, I'm saying every time I go there, it's functioning properly.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
So do you think that that drain was functioning properly that day?
I don't know. I don't know what day that was, Brad.
So that, it, can we pull a plan on that, just for, to reference, because we should have, if, the Cape Cod is, should be all the way around the subdivision, and then-
It's not. You didn't vote for that.
Well, let's find out what the plan says.
You waived it.
I know what the plan says.
You waived it. You waived the curbing.
Higher curbing?
You waived the, almost the entire curbing of the entire-
So then, but if it's not, if it's not working, the drainage isn't working, do we still have a bond on it?
I don't know.
We do still have a bond.
The town accept the street?
No.
We have not, but I, I would argue that it, it's not that it's not functioning, I, we have had some neighbor complaints during those specific events, and we have sent TEC out to take a look at them, myself, Rennie have been going to the site every single time a neighbor calls, and one of the times there was a, a rain event, the neighbor was like, uh, um, I'm, I'm gonna, I'll send photos, I'll, I'll send photos, because I know it's gonna flood, I know it's gonna flood, and then she's like, it just didn't flood this time, and then it's, it just didn't flood this time, so we have been out there, so it's been-
Yeah, but it's supposed to be built for, you know, a, a minimum 25-year storm, but-
It's not perfect, I'm not saying it's perfect, and I'm not an engineer, I'm just saying that it is true that it has been progressively becoming more stabilized.
You can't make them put curbing all the way around the whole thing.
No, but on this one-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we can. It's called eighty-
No, we can't.
We can.
No, we can't.
Hold on.
Because we waived it, we already waived it, so.
So, under Mass General Law, Section 81W, if a subdivision is not performing, okay, you can pull it back in here, and we gotta make a correction, because the town's gonna accept the road, or the town doesn't accept the road, and then you're stuck with it.
Well, you want, you want vote, vote whatever way you want.
Well, well, no, I think, I think it's something that we have to take a look at. If, if a, if a design came in from the engineer that its intent was good, but it's not working and it's failing, and we're flooding out property and utilities, I might add-
The subdivision is working exactly as it was designed.
That picture shows utilities underwater.
That's the way it was designed.
So why don't we do this, Wally? We'll watch it, we're gonna get more rain events.
Yeah.
We'll watch it, and if it, if it continues to flood, even if the grass is taken, then we'll, then we'll talk about the curbing.
Yeah, because there's gotta be a fix, because you can't turn it over to the town like that, and, and, and I'm not saying that you intentionally did that, what I'm saying is that sometimes plans don't work the way they're designed, and they gotta be re-twicked.
Yeah, no kid.
Well, yeah, well, Christensen and Sergi, you know, they need to come up with a fix on that, that was their baby, and, um, and if it's not working- Well, then, then some, they're out of business already. That was quick. Um, so, you, you know, they're gonna have to propose a pitch, or you're gonna, you're in charge of that right now, so.
I just wanted to bring it back up to the board.
Yeah.
And we'll watch it, we'll monitor it.
Yeah, we'll see.
Rebecca's been on it, Rennie's been on it, but I still think that, um, you know, they may be right, Rennie may be right, you may be right, but the, the concern I would have moving forward that the town is gonna accept the road eventually, and the problem's gonna happen, the problem's gonna be on the town, to put a curbing after the fact.
Right, the town's not gonna accept it, the, the town should not accept the faulty road.
The worry is next Jul, the next July, next August, happens all the time, once the pavement gets hot, the grass burns out, we're gonna have the same problem, so we'll watch on the next rain events and-
Do you think the snow rise is gonna have some kind of impact this winter?
No, I don't think it's, no, it'll be hot and it'll be fine by then, so, we'll watch it through, we'll watch it through the fall and spring.
Okay. Yeah, and it just, you, you know, I mean, it's just not gonna get accepted by the town like that, so, and it might be a simple fix, you know, Al, and, and I'm not blaming you for that, because if you built it the way that it is, then it's a design flaw, and sometimes that happens. I've seen it on a couple subdivisions, and you just gotta go in and do a little fix for it.
It is a simple fix, I think it's like eight feet of curbing and it's done.
So that, that's a simple one.
Curbing, Brad, what you're talking about would make that problem worse.
I don't think so.
The water wouldn't flow into the catch basin. We've, we infrareded the road there, we took a manhole cover and turned it into a catch basin, and we've made several progressions along the way to address, address those problems. That's why they're fixed. We go out, we look, if there's something we can do, we fix it. Unit's been out there five times, infrareding the asphalt on the top coat to adjust it, turning a manhole into a catch basin to adjust it, grading to adjust it, JUC Mac to adjust it, seeding to adjust it, we've messed with this thing for a year, over a year.
I, I've been down there right now.
Who's doing the, when you guys do the fixes, is it just field changes, or, or is, do you have an engineer that's actually been proposing that before you do it?
No, we do it.
And there was a, there was an engineer, and we went out to the site specifically for the catch basin on the bottom, both Phil Christensen was there, I was there, Mike Dempsey was there, TEC was there.
Okay, since that, since that last rainstorm.
Rebecca's talking about the catch basin that wasn't on the plan.
The infiltrator on the bottom.
Okay.
The infiltrator on the bottom that everyone thought was a good idea, so I added a catch basin to the plan.
Yeah, okay. So you get that, so, so, but this fix was just done in the field, did anybody look at it?
Rebecca's been out there a couple times.
Okay, engineering-wise?
Which fix, though, are you talking about?
He's talking about me grading and whatever, it doesn't matter.
Well, he, he just said he infrareded the pavement and converted a manhole to a catch basin, so that particular fix to address this issue.
Yeah, TEC's been out there, I don't know how many times, Rebecca, five?
They've been out there pretty frequently.
Probably five times.
Well, w- like you said, we'll just have to watch it, and if it floods again, then we're gonna have to do something about it, and, um, see if we can come up with a fix, maybe put all the hits together and the engineers and, and fix it, I'm not blaming you for that.
I know, I get it.
If it's built the way it's designed, just a bad design.
But I just want to put it on record, in good faith, if you feel that you've done everything you possibly could, this is just a snafu or just some kind of incident that can't un-reoccur?
As I stand here today, what I'm saying is, the subdivision is 100% complete and functioning the way is actually better than it was designed, we made improvements to make the subdivision better along the way. I don't know if you remember, there's a whole big thing, I had to lower the roadway. Brad, you asked, you asked, you said, well, the road's lower than it is on the plan, yeah, because Bob Alakalian sat here, had a conversation with Phil Christensen, they agreed on some stuff, nobody knows exactly what it was, all I know is I had to cut trees, I had to loom, I had to seed, I had to-
Yeah, but that's not what we're talking about.
Catch basin, well, I'm saying, I made it better, all along the way, I've made it, he asked me, I made it better. So as I stand here today, it's a better subdivision than was approved by this board, and it's functioning properly, that's what I believe.
We, I just wanna make sure that we're not gonna take something on that we shouldn't have to take on.
There's nothing that-
We're just gonna watch it, if it works, fine.
That's fine, you can watch it all you want, I, I-
All right, that, that's what we'll do.
Yeah.
Not gonna make any motions, we're just gonna watch it.
No, watch it, is there, there's still surety on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, and then the only motion you can do is just fly one that says we'll keep an eye on it, and, uh, you know, town won't accept it until we're-
It's on record, we got it on tape, we don't.
Until we get a, you know, check this thing out and the board signs off.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, Al.
Thank you.
Think we, uh, have one more.
So the, um, the final thing we have on the agenda this season is Graham Way, um, that is the subdivision that has been going on for quite some time as well, um, we actually, um, if you remember or recall, back in the springtime, ran into a situation where we had realized that there is no easement for the cistern, um, so somebody had moved into the lot, but there's no easement, so there's no access to the cistern, in addition to that, there was no new, um, clear path as to what we were gonna do about the maintenance of the cistern, um, the former fire chief who reviewed the subdivision plan had expressed concern over taking ownership for the maintenance and inspection of the cistern, and then also the current fire chief had expressed those same concerns, so when the developer came forward for street acceptance, we kind of said, well, um, you know, what, what do you think, and the fire chief and, and his team were like, well, we don't want to take on that liability, so, we went back to discuss with the developer and the residents that live on Graham Way to figure out exactly what we could do, um, we found that they did have a homeowners association associated with the, um, maintenance of the open space strip that is along Graham Way, as well as the middle and center of the cul-de-sac, so we had them, um, alter and amend the HOA to include, uh, the maintenance and inspections of the cistern, uh, they gracefully allowed us to, to move forward with that amendment, uh, that is in your packet, so you can see that that additional language was added, the fire chief went out, there was a test, uh, uh, fire, uh, flow test, um, the fire department was out there, they witnessed it, everything seems to be where it needs to be currently, and it's operating the way that it should be operating, so the developer is looking for, um, a positive, uh, recommendation, a favorable recommendation for street acceptance to go on to the Board of Selectmen. Uh, we also have a letter in your packets from Peter Williams with GZA, he was the peer review engineer for this particular project, so he has, in fact, signed off on the project stating that it substantially complies, um, we did have a couple of hiccups along the way, the sidewalks needed to be moved, and then also the developer allowed, um, or the developer agreed to remove or move the gate access for the detention pond and put it closer to the roadway, so the highway commissioner and his team could, um, access for maintenance in the future. Uh, the other hiccup that we had along the way is that in efforts to connect into the utilities, they had to go through, uh, SD way for the electric, and in doing so, they cut up, um, SD way for, which is a public roadway, um, the trench, uh, was not paved over properly, so there is a little bit of a, a dip in the roadway, so we have been working with the developer and his team to get that rectified so that that is no longer a concern for the town, so he has complied with all of the regulations, he has complied with all of the, has been asked of him, and is seeking, again, a positive, uh, assuming a favorable recommendation for a street acceptance.
Thank you.
So, how much does it cost to maintain the, uh, cistern?
I'm not certain, so it must be coming out of whatever-
It's gonna become another home association.
What they're setting up.
Does anybody know what that costs, or?
It's gonna be on them, so.
Yeah, so in the homeowners association, who's, who's responsible?
The homeowners association, the residents that live along Graham Way.
You got a signed document right here.
Okay. Just a gee whiz question, um, so one, the homeowners association, then everybody agrees to do it, where's the teeth if nobody pays their dues and it doesn't get done? And how often does it have to be inspected, do you know?
And this is exactly why the fire department did not want to take on the liability and responsibility for a cistern, because they're not a thing of the day that we have in front of us, you, cisterns are very, you know, typically in New Hampshire.
Antiquated in, the chief doesn't have the staff to, to go out and do, maintain a cistern, so that's why it's on the homeowners association.
So-
I thought it was, we had, uh, Bob, I think, mentioned that do the inspection beforehand, and I don't remember, must be some kind of annual inspection, I would assume, I don't know if it's spelt out in the homeowners association, I don't see it.
Yeah, that's what I'm surprised there wasn't, uh, another page to this that said how that is performed, how often it's performed, and it, it says notified, and if there's maintenance, it's gotta be approved, but- It doesn't say how frequently. Yeah, it doesn't, I mean, is that once a decade, or?
It's part of the, um, maintenance plan that's associated with the, the cistern, the model of the cistern.
Do we have one, a copy of that, or did they submit that?
If they don't, Wally, I think what we can do is motion to accept it, and just add it in the language.
I got just one-
Yeah, we can-
I just got one concern on the, um, cistern fence around the, the pond is, um, the fence is at least two and a half through, at least two and a half feet higher than the ground level, so a little kid could roll down in underneath that, if they slid it, whatever.
That was done because of national heritage and the need to have enough room for the turtles to migrate.
Really? Okay.
So they didn't take any consideration in for little kids?
Little kids or nothing, huh?
So a bl- a turtle needs two feet?
Yeah. It is literally two feet.
I went down there, I, I forget.
Yeah, take a ride down there sometime and take a look. Looks ridiculous.
So other than this homeowners association-
I thi- I think if it's because it was ledged, they couldn't get it down all, all the way, but.
Is there standing water in that pond?
Mm-hmm. Every time I take a, take a ride down there, there's always standing water.
So that kind of is a safety concern, don't you think so?
I think so, but.
So Rebecca, is there anything they can do, ride and have it?
I don't, I don't have any issues else with the subdivision except for that.
That was a requirement of the plan to be built that way.
People move into the subdivisions to have little kids to play in the-
Cul-de-sac, and they could-
Yeah, everybody plays in the cul-de-sac.
Yeah. I mean, if it's that way, then, then it is what it is, then, so.
Wally?
Yeah.
You have any input on that? I mean, I gotta tell you, I mean, I, I get the turtle thing, but I have a little bit more concern for, for human safety, for human life.
Yeah, and, and is it two feet lower, or is it just two feet off the ground for that?
Two feet off the ground.
Two feet off the ground, yeah.
I remember seeing that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, here's a question for you.
That must be a massive turtle. I mean-
I have a question for you, though. Just like deer crossing, they put the sign on the deer crossing because they know that there's a pattern in which the deer has crossed, is there a way that we could determine if there is a set path, or if that's the case, put-
National Heritage sets it if it's in the, uh, if it's in the turtle district or dangerous species district, so they would have to make it so, the blended turtle wants to hit water.
But that's all I'm trying to say is, if that was the case, could we not put screening or something to protect it?
You gotta put it so they can migrate into the water, but-
Right.
I'd rather see a kid not migrate to the pond than a turtle.
Is it tagged of keep out, or? No.
It do, well, so, okay, so can a toddler that just, a mother just turns around and gets away and is playing in the street, can they read?
No.
You know what I mean?
No, but kids aren't gonna read.
So.
I guess what I'm asking is, is there a way that they could put bars, separate, you know what I'm saying, a foot and a half apart, that a child cannot, but, uh, the turtle could?
That's what I was saying.
It's talking like slats, yeah.
The board had already came, George came before the board a while ago and asked about the fence, and the board had already approved the fence. And they actually made an alteration to the fence because the original fence, per the specifications, had barbed wire on the top. And Barbara Kelly, at the time, said there's no reason to have barbed wire on top of the fence. So, that was removed, and the board approved the fence as it was designed. The only change to the fence that was made outside of the planning board was the gate to be moved for access of the machinery to go in there and maintain the pond. So, technically, the board had already approved the fence.
So, we didn't know, so I wasn't a member, probably?
I wasn't, yeah.
Four of us were not members at the time, so.
And just to go back to the question about the inspection, so the inspections of maintenance and dry hydrants per NFPA requirements, as discussed with Lieutenant Belfiore, as well as the fire chief, is that the dry hydrants shall be inspected at least quarterly and maintained as necessary. And then they go through into the different inspections that would be required.
So, is that from, is that the new letter, or is that, okay?
This was issued on March 17, 2021.
Okay. So, in the homeowner's association, is there, is there a line item, is there a budget item? Is, you know, with quarterly, that's a lot of testing.
The homeowner's association is a private organization, so we don't have, I don't have any access to their financial documents and/or their operations.
Is there a member of this board that sits on that?
No.
No, no.
Homeowner's Association, okay.
We don't need to.
We do on Whitestone Village and others, there's, for a while there, until it gets stabilized, there was a board member that's on there. But, okay. So, here's my only question. Okay, I see the homeowner's association, I see that they signed off, that they got quarterly inspections, there's no budget item with this, and do we have a copy of the actual, the entire homeowner's association?
We have the original one that was established prior to getting building permits for the actual lots themselves.
You don't have a current one?
But this is the most amended one with all of the signatures of those who reside on the pond.
Right. But it just doesn't say it costs 500 bucks a test?
No.
It.
Because it.
Doesn't, we don't need to know the cost, Wally.
Well, here's, here's my, my theory on that. Okay. So, if you're doing 500 bucks a cost, I mean, a whack, okay, per quarter, okay, and we go through this testing, okay, you get $2,000 a year, just your mark for this, never mind for anything else, okay? And then people move around nowadays, okay, they're going to be hopefully made aware of the homeowner's association, but it's a, it's a fire requirement to have it tested now, quarterly, correct? Okay. And so, where's, what I don't see in this one piece paper that we have, I'm sure it's there maybe, is that the authority that if someone doesn't pony up on the homeowner's association, what teeth does the homeowner's association have? Because a lot of these.
There is no homeowner police. I was head of a HOA up in New Hampshire.
Okay.
There's no homeowners association police department.
So, what's?
If they pay, basically, from my understanding, when we were part of it, you donated, you paid, you have fair share. If somebody doesn't pay, that's life.
Okay. So, so because we have.
Small claims court within that.
Exactly.
Within, right, that's going to be set up like a business.
Okay, got that. But we now have, for town acceptance, a public safety attachment to that on a mandatory requirement.
The homeowner's association is going to have to do it.
Okay. So, if it's not done.
Well, let me ask you this.
Yeah.
So, the HOA has to monitor the cistern quarterly. I'm sure the fire department's going to get a report.
Right.
So, with that being said, they're going to have to produce a report every quarter to the fire department.
Right. So, let's just say, couple of years down the road, okay, no more reports, no more testing, where's the teeth?
That's from the fire department.
Right. So, does the fire department have any authority to go back in on that agreement that they just made?
I would think the chief.
Because the town's going to be accepted the road at that point.
They can die it and.
Right. The chief will have his teeth into that, I'm sure.
Okay. My, my only thought is that down the line, the town's going to get stuck with this thing. If this, if these tests aren't done, and because the road's accepted, and we've seen some of this before in other towns in our own, that where the town has to pick up this thing because now it owns the road. And even though there's an agreement, it fell apart, and there was no enforcement language, and so the town has to go in and most likely will remove the cisterns and put in a standard system.
It can't fall apart because it's all deeded to their property.
And once they move, it gets redeeded to the new people.
Redeeded to the next one, just like a common driveway.
Yeah, I just mean, there's going to be no enforcement, not anything else, you know? I'm just worried about the fire protection.
But I don't think that's a planning board. It's taken way out of the box too much.
I think it's.
No, we don't. We can just ask for the, that's all we can do, and then make, make the fire chief aware of it and make homeowner's association aware of it, and that's what it is.
Well, then it goes back to the board. Shame on the board for allowing a cistern to be put into the road.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't sign up on that one.
Yeah, I didn't either.
And, yeah, it's like.
All right. So, that answers the questions that we have. So, the votes before us are.
I still, I still can't get over the turtles versus the life and safety of.
Unfortunately, I think, you know, I mean, I don't know how to readdress that problem.
I know, moving forward as a board, Rebecca, how do you, what do you propose when they say, put a, put a fence to keep people out two feet higher, but the turtles can go in and out?
It depends on what filings were made with National Heritage and the state agency and the Conservation Commission. So, those are all communications that we'll need to have based on a case-by-case basis of what plan is before us. We can't cert, we can't supersede certain organizations who have jurisdiction over specific habitat, but I'm sure there's ways that we could address it if there were other mechanisms in place that we could use to accommodate what it is that they're trying to achieve and what we are trying to achieve. So, I think it's just more of a communication thing and actually looking at the plan and viewing that at that particular time.
I agree. I mean, moving forward, I.
Oh, definitely moving forward.
Yeah, I think public safety takes precedence over, over that.
Like you said, four of us wasn't even on the board at the time, so how many years ago are we talking?
I don't know. I don't know when that went.
And I don't think we ever saw the National Heritage report either. But I bet you National Heritage didn't think about that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, all right. So.
Want us, I think we would fly a motion to accept.
To accept and then request a full copy of the homeowner's association, including the restrictions.
I don't think we can do that.
But we can just have it on file.
Let me ask you a question. We get it, then what are we going to do? Look at it and go, okay, thank you?
We can't enforce it.
No, no, not from an enforcement standpoint, but, but because they have one on it and includes fire protection now, just to, just to have it on file.
The modification for the fire and the cistern is actually what you're seeing in the document that's before you. The other document has references to the common areas that, again, are along the top side of Graham, the middle of the cul-de-sac, and just says certain regulations for the operations of the homeowners association for members and all those other types of things. It doesn't address any additional fire or safety concerns within that document.
No, but it should be a line item that says, now that we have this agreement, that we get to test this quarterly, the homeowners are responsible for the fee to test quarterly. The fee is $500 through the testing agency. Report shall go over to the fire department and to the town of Groveland, and that's the piece I'm looking for.
I don't know if it's, I've already seen that.
It does say, it does say reports go over to the fire department, correct?
Yeah, it just doesn't have a, and what happens if they don't?
It doesn't.
I don't know whether or not that they're going to modify their homeowners association, again, to include such language.
Right, it's going to cost them more money.
Internal policy, I don't know if it's a vote that they make among the directors.
I think Chief Valentine will be honest, he knows.
Yeah, he's pretty, pretty forward with stuff.
He shot me in, so I think.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, unless, unless there's language to address, and it could be something as general other fees, but it should specifically address now that and how the homeowner's association is going to handle that because it's a quarterly test. It's not.
But the homeowner's association is the own governing agency. We don't have any oversight on that.
No, we just got to make sure we get the reports, and the fire chief does.
Does the planning board usually get a report or something of this nature every quarter?
No, I would think that wouldn't even be the planning board.
But if we don't, then why should we start now?
Wouldn't be the planning board, it would be the zoning office. The zoning office would have to go to.
But a courtesy copy of the agreement that references the part that was approved on the plan should be on file. That's all. I'm not saying we don't do it.
And it will be through the fire department and through the zoning board.
So, do you think the chief or the fire department can also submit the quarterly inspections to the zoning enforcement agency?
That's already the plan.
Okay, it's already the plan, Wally.
There you go.
Yeah. So, yeah, all right, as long as, I just hope that, you know, down there, they don't come to us in two years ago, okay, now we have to accept the street.
I'll fly a motion to accept Graham Way.
I'll second it.
That's just on this, right? We're not doing the ASBILs now, are we?
No.
No, just the.
We're not doing, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The ASBILs.
The ASBILs.
No, we're just voting to make a favorable recommendation to the board of selectmen for the acceptance of Graham Way.
I'm sorry, that is related.
Mr. Chairman?
I think we fly the motion.
I'll fly the motion to accept Graham Way.
And move it on to the town of Groveland.
Town of Groveland to you for acceptance for the road.
I'll second it.
Wally, you want to add anything to that motion?
Um.
Not the reporting, though.
What's that?
I said, without the reports.
No, no, I don't want the reports, but I, but I, I think there should be one copy of the complete homeowner's association that reference, references the inspection just submitted to the board, and then let the, because it's going to come up a town.
That's what the document is.
This is a recorded.
Just one page.
That's all it is.
The homeowner's association has already been recorded at the registry of deeds, so they can't just retract a recorded document and say, oh, I've amended it, here you go, this is the full document. So, there's two documents on the Southern Essex Registry of Deeds. One is the original homeowner's association. The second is the amended, it says right there, the first amendment of said homeowner's association.
Okay.
So, it is recorded.
There's two separate documents.
So, I get that, there's two separate documents, and this document says nothing about how much that's going to cost, what the purpose is, it just, it just outlines the.
We don't need to know the cost. It's, that's up to the homeowner's association.
If that's the case, should we ask every homeowner's association to submit these things?
If the board approved it, then it's on the point, yes.
We cannot ask the homeowner's association to, to.
It's like people go into your private home and saying to you, I want a copy of your mortgage.
No, 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 this is different. This is different because, and I'll, and I'll be firm on this for a minute. Okay. Okay, what they're asking the board to do is to approve an amendment, which I get, and they filed the original, the original homeowner's association, and I don't care about colors of paints and fences and all that stuff, okay? But this is, has to do with fire and fire protection and public safety. And if these cisterns fail, and there is no mechanism or anything in writing on this particular page, because this is the only one, okay, and it's not attached to anything, that says that the cistern fails, the homeowner's association is responsible for it, it's going to be a minimum of X amount of dollars, and it does say that probably that the town, I see that, the fire chief has to approve it. Okay, so if all the people on there say, nah, it's 50,000, we're not doing it, it comes back to the town of Groveland. And the town of Groveland is going to get petitioned to accept the road and fix it on the public service dollars. You see where I'm going with this? Because there's no teeth in this amendment that says, thou shall put thy lien on homeowner's house if this fire protection cistern isn't done, and in no way and shape shall the town of Groveland accept these cisterns into the system. They shall remain with, with the homeowner's association and completely fund it. But then we have a fire safety problem. If those fail and there's no water down there.
That cistern's not going to last forever, and by the time that cistern goes, we'll probably be done, and they'll probably have a hydrant up there by then.
Well, that'd be nice, actually. But, but that's, that's my only thing, because I've seen this happen before where everybody has good intentions, and then they'll petition the town later, and the town has to eat it to fix it. Because there wasn't enough teeth, or there wasn't enough, something wasn't mentioned in the language.
I think it's too late for the teeth. I think the teeth have passed, it's already been recorded, we've already accepted it.
No, 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 I'm not saying re-record anything. I'm just asking for the board to have additional documentation that's already recorded at the registry.
But that's what, reference right here, Essex, book page 3559, registered on January 5, 2017.
And devil's advocate, page 3559 specifically says all the language about the cistern.
But that was recorded in 2017 prior to the system ever being known by the homeowner's association.
That's my point. This is an amendment page, but there's no teeth that goes with it. So, there's got to be something else that goes with it.
This is the residents who wanted to get their street accepted so that they could have town services who have been living there since 2017 and have been denied services because of the developer's failure and the board's failure to recognize the cistern and the cistern issue. So, this was the compromise that the residents agreed to do. They didn't have to do a homeowner's association. The fire department wasn't going to accept it, and they don't have to do a homeowner's association to accept it. But they recognize there's an issue there, and they've accommodated the best that they can, and we've been working with them to move forward so that it's now 2021 and they can get the services as, as taxpaying residents.
That is 100% on the developer for all of that, okay? They designed a system, yes, the board approved it, but if it didn't work and it was holding up an ASBIL, okay, that's on the developer. It's not on this town or the citizens.
But it's been proven that it does work. The proof has been, it has worked.
So, the only thing that I'm asking.
They already tested it, so I think there's a motion on the table.
Okay, wait a minute. Okay, and, and there is an open discussion at the moment. I'm just asking, does the town of Groveland Planning Board have a copy of the homeowner's association, and is this particular language with that letter from the fire chief of the quarterly inspections and how that's going to be done, is that also recorded in the registry? Or will it be? That's my question.
Me, I answered your question. This is the first amendment that they made to the homeowner's association.
So, it's not.
So, the language that you're referencing, this is the only language that has been amended and voted on by the homeowner's association regarding the cistern.
So, then add it to the motion that just the fire department's requirements be recorded with this, and I'm good. Because they're not.
Say that again.
The fire department's requirements of the quarterly testing in their letter as to how the agreement is also be attached to this to be recorded in the registry, that's all.
I don't know if we have that authority.
So, you'd have to go back to the homeowner's association, and the homeowner's association would then need to gather, reconvene, take another vote, get an amendment, so it would be the second amendment to the actual homeowner's association.
No, it's an additional recorded page.
But they'd have to go and vote, they're not, they can't do one individual person, can't write it up.
So, let them do it.
But then they have to hire an attorney, and they have to go through the process.
We're trying to get this through for the next meeting, for the selectmen to approve.
Yeah. Okay.
So, we can vote on.
So, that's my addition on the, on the motion. Send it over to the selectmen, but I, I don't think that's something.
I'm sure the selectmen will pick this issue up, they're hearing us.
Well, it's going to go to town meeting floor. I think it's going to be for, for road acceptance, that's going to raise a lot of questions, everybody's going to have a lot of input in it. But asking for that requirement that we already have sitting on the table over there to be attached to this in the recording, I don't think that's a whole big deal, because it references it right here. It's just not recorded on the page.
But I, this document kind of speaks for itself.
Okay. So, so you got the motion, second, call for a vote?
What's the motion?
So, the motion originally was made by, by Bob, and then there was discussion, and are you making a friendly amendment, or are you making a different?
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion that the requirements of the fire chief also be recorded with this, that's it.
So, did Bob accept that friendly amendment?
No.
I have to stand with Bob on that, Wally. I mean, we want to get this, these people haven't had services for four years.
And they're taxpaying.
Yeah, again, that's, that's, I feel for all of them, but they, that's against the developer, has nothing to do with them and nothing to do with.
I don't think it's against the developer, I think it was against the previous board that.
You got to vote, call it.
I guess my issue would be issue with the previous board that actually said, go ahead, put a cistern over there without this requirement. I mean, that was the time to put the language in. They've already done their due diligence, and I think they went above and beyond.
Beyond, exactly, thank you.
Their call, you know what I mean, as residents, to put together, to put together a, let me finish, to put together a homeowner's association that they didn't need to do, and I think they did a good job doing that, so I don't think there's any need for any more documents to be recorded to the.
No, no, we have it right there.
Where do those details of the quarterly inspections live then?
At the registry of deeds.
Well, they're not. That's what, they're not, that's my point. They're not recorded.
So, like, if somebody down the road needs those details, how do they find them? Like, how, how are they able to?
It's recorded in the registry of deeds, right, Rebecca?
No.
No, the inspections are all under NFP, NFPA, or NF, yeah, NFPA.
That's my point.
The National Fire Protection Association.
That letter that we have sitting right there, all you got to do is they record this, and they attach that, and it's just another page, that's all. They don't have to do anything. That, that was the reason, that's what I meant, and he's, he tagged it, too.
Yeah, they have to go back and take another vote.
No, it's, it's not another vote. It's already a requirement and approved for the fire chief.
How tough would it, how tough would it be just to throw that other page and have it recorded to the?
I'd have no authority to take a document and go to the registry and record it on behalf I'd have no authority to take a document and go to the registry and record it on behalf of an association that I'm not legally bound to and/or have any association.
The association would have to have another meeting, they would have to vote on it. Either they deny it, or yes, and then they have to record it and everything, it's costing more money and everything else.
I disagree, that doesn't hold up the vote going for the selectmen.
As a homeowner, and this association's having this test, wouldn't you want a copy of it for your procedural file? If this was on, how do you go home, you're in the homeowners association?
Somebody's got to know those are quarterly tests, and the only way to find it is in the registry of deeds. And if it's at that one page, if that's all it is, is one page, when they record this, they just attach it to it, and it's just another page. It's, it references it right here.
It's another lawyer, it's going to, it's going to cost another lawyer to write it up, to do the right thing.
No, it doesn't, it's, it's a recorded page, it's already there, it's already been approved and signed off by the homeowners association, which is how this amendment came in, it's an additional page.
I guess you haven't, uh, registered anything at the registry lately, so.
That's right, it's like an addition on a plan, so.
All right, let me ask you this, when does this need to go to the selectmen to get voted on?
It doesn't need to, you can continue to not make a, an acceptance if you don't want to. I, I, but I don't understand how we can alter a document without them agreeing to it.
They're going to have to agree to it, is what Wally's saying.
So that's, yeah, that's it.
But they're going to have to.
So they're going to have to hold a meeting.
So they're going to have to hold a meeting, right?
Yeah.
They're going to have to have somebody legally drop the documents.
And that would be the Second Amendment to the homeowners association, it's not just an attachment to a page.
Right, there'd be a second amendment.
Because it references here, this, what that is, and the only thing, if they did add anything to this, would be.
See.
Has to be a legal document, Wally.
It's going to be a legal document, and a lawyer has to write it.
No, no, this amendment that's on here, um, that references that can have a paragraph on it that says, see, requirement from Groveland PD dated, uh, if, dated March. Yes, you can, have you ever done anything in the registry box?
Yes, I have, a lot of it.
Me too, so, so that can be added onto here, and if they need a vote of themselves, then that's what they do. But someone has to know that that test is quarterly, so that they prepare for it, but there's no teeth in this document to protect those residents, and to protect the town of Groveland. It's already written right there, they don't, nobody has to write anything, they just have to record it.
John, you, you had some comments.
My only comment was around the same question, is that where do those details live after this, if they don't get recorded with the paragraph that's referencing it down the road? Is that filed somewhere with the fire department?
Yes.
Like, where does it?
There's a document at the fire station.
Fight, state fire marshals.
It's this fire code.
Fire code. So, just like Fadi's gas station and everything else, all those reports are filed with the state co, fire marshal.
Right, but we made, we included language in Fadi's approval that said, that referenced the frequency of testing, and that's what that page does.
But this might be, is this part of the fire code?
So we, in Fadi's prop, in Fadi's approval, we have a decision that conditions that we get the inspection reports.
Right.
So this is a different document.
Yes.
Because we specifically said, your approval is contingent upon getting A, B, C, and D. In this particular case, not once did the planning board in 2015 say anything about the cistern. All they did was attach a letter from the fire chief, I believe it was Lay at the time, which specifically said, the development as designed is fine with the hydrant, but we have serious concerns about the cistern and future maintenance and inspections. And then the developer went through, he built the, the, the site, he got building permits, people bought the house, he got occupancy permits, people were living in the house, they, they did the homeowners association in, in, in 2017 in order to get their building permits, and they've been living there ever since.
Is this part of the fire code at all, that's an annual inspection, or a quarterly inspection?
That is, he literally verbatim took it out of the fire code.
Okay, so it's part of the fire code, just like it's in the codebook, so you do not need another document, it's a living document.
Document.
Yeah, as long as it's referenced somewhere.
It doesn't have to be referenced, it's state, it's state code.
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's a codebook, it's a codebook.
You have a motion second on the floor, I mean, I mean, remember, this is going to come up. Yeah.
I wanted to hear you, uh, you out, I wanted to hear John out, but there is, there is a living document, it's part of the code, it's part of the fire code. It's a 900 section. It's part of a 900, so that would mean that it's a document that the fire chief has to deal with, just like, just like a building code that's.
Yeah, the electrical code.
Electrical code.
Right, it's the same thing, the only trouble is.
It's not referenced, when you go to pull your electrical permit, when you have to do a second floor smoke alarm or a heat detector, it's not referenced in, it's not referenced in a document, it's just understood, it's in the code.
Right, right.
Have to know, you have to know the code there, you know the code.
Precisely, Harry homeowner and Sally homeowner.
Doesn't matter to Harry homeowner.
It does, they're paying the bill. No, 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 the chief knows the code, the chief knows exactly what to do, chief knows the reports, no doubt, it hands out.
Then I'm going to, then I'm going to say that we're going to rely on the chief per the code.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can I have, uh, I mean, if this is a big hangup, can we ask the residents to come in and, and get their input on it?
Whatever, it's a pleasure of the board, it's not my decision.
I mean, I will, it's. So the question is, is the planning board understand his concerns?
No, I understand, Wally's.
I understand his concerns, but I mean. No, the homeowners, and that's what I'm saying, bring them, I mean, bring them to this question, let them now say if they're happy with. Are they happy with what they have here, or they want to?
I don't think they would have signed off on it.
I don't think they knew.
I don't think they would have signed off.
Yeah.
Me too, because a, a lawyer wrote this, so. If that's the case, could we?
Yeah, you want to bring them in, you want to have another meeting, then so be it.
Yeah, so be, I, I.
It, it, you know, it's.
Let's give the homeowners the decision. Just by suggestion.
And if all the homeowners can make it on that night, then they can vote right there, and then if they want to add another document.
Right, so, so there's two, there's two ways to do it, so, and, and I don't want to hold up the vote. So, so we have it out there, but this will come up at town meeting, someone will bring it up, the fire chief will bring it up, or something like that, but I probably, and most likely, because this has happened with subdivisions in town for, since I've been here, in almost three decades now, okay, is that this gets written, but it may not be 100% understood, and, and so attaching the actual requirements of the Groveland Fire Department, as he wrote it, to a document that references that is really not a big deal, but it makes it clear as day, not saying, okay, what's, here it is here, we have to do this, but what, what are those? Now we got to go searching for another page, when it, it could be easily just attached over to here. Now, that's up to the homeowners association, how they want to handle that, I get it, okay, but we have it, why not attach it to this and record it? And, and just ask them, because a town, we have another shot at this, a town meeting floor, because if it comes up, and the fire chief doesn't like it, okay, or someone else doesn't like it that lives on the street, it's not going to get accepted by the town, and that's not going to help them, and the poor residents, they had no control over this from the beginning.
No, but the poor residents already agreed and signed, but.
Right, so, so it carried the motion, and let's, let's move it out of here.
I, is that all right, Rebecca, if we bring them in?
Again, I don't have a vote, this is all you, whatever you would like to do is whatever you would like to do. I know I've been working with the residents since we acknowledged the problem, I know that I have, have gotten the, the approval of both, um, the fire inspection team and the fire chief, um, we have been working with Lisa Mead, with Mead Talam and Costa, to get the documents drafted, we've been working with George Hazelton to make sure that he's done all of the corrections, I've been working with the, the HOA chair, Michael, uh, Burgoyt, I'm going to butcher his name, so I'm not going to, um, and walking him through the process, and having Zoom meetings with all of the homeowners to make sure that they could get the easements in place, because it was no easy feat, because they had already had an occupancy, they already had a mortgage, so I've been working with these homeowners since we had acknowledged the problem, and they have been accepting of the process, and accepting of every hiccup, and they would like to get the roadway accepted. But if the board would like to bring them in, then the board is the ultimate authority, and I suggest you do exactly what you would like to do.
When does the town acceptance meeting?
I, I am going to. I, I am going to float my motion, my first motion, to accept the document the way it is, and, uh.
So we're going to float the motion. So the motion on the floor is going to be to accept the document as submitted to the planning board, as it stands today, as it's been recorded, without adding another layer to this. So, I got to think that Lisa Mead, law office, in the homeowners, she knows what she's doing, Wally.
Okay, so my question is, okay, and it doesn't, okay, fly the motion and the vote.
So, do I have a second on that motion to adopt?
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, anything else? Administrative items?
Um, no, just that we, uh, potentially are going to have a special town meeting come November and/or early December.
Is this going on it, do you know?
I would think so.
Well, special town meeting's usually not.
It is the hope due to the season and the fact that these people have been denied services.
For plowing and.
Stand that, yeah. Who's been plowing it?
I'm not sure who's been plowing, um, it's, George must have some type of contractor that goes and plows that particular roadway.
Got it, okay.
Uh, when's that next meeting, Rebecca?
Uh, the next meeting is, um, October 19th would be our regularly scheduled meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
But I, I technically don't necessarily have anything